Thank you. Good evening, everybody. With a quorum of the school committee, I will call the school committee to order on September 20th at 6:01 PM. Member Crowley will be absent this evening and member Liberty will be joining remote. So in person, we have Amy, Jamal, and myself. As chair, I motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with a regard to litigation of an open meeting law complaint, giving that a discussion in open session may have a detrimental impact on the school committee's position. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The school committee will reconvene in open session at 6:30. Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 6:31 PM on September 20th, and I will call the school committee to order in open session. We have, just to reiterate, member Mike Crowley will not be with us tonight. Member Liberty is joining us remote. And Kate, Jamal, Amy, and I are all here in person. The meeting is being recorded and televised by Belmont Media Center, and we will begin tonight with citizens' concerns, which is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. If you would like to speak on comments about items that are not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand or your virtual hand. When I call on you, please identify yourself by your full name and direct your comments to me as chair. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. I will not call on any individuals more than once during this comment period, and please remember that this is a time and an opportunity for individuals to share their opinions and thoughts with the school committee, but not for discussion and debate. The items on our agenda this evening are the music fee discussion and potential vote, custodial fees, fiscal year 2023 budget adjustment for English language position, and the presentation of our district priorities for the school year. So if anybody would like to make a comment for those of you in public, if you're here in public, if you could please come to the podium and state your name and then...
Do I need to... Is it already on?
It's on.
It's on. Great. Hi, I'm Kara Sassone. I live at 219 Belmont Street. Thank you, Chairperson, School Committee Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. I appreciate you opening the floor for comments from the community. I've recently transitioned from being the mother of two elementary school students to two middle school students. I choose my wording carefully. As for the past year, while my children were in fourth grade, I was, as were they, reassured that going to Chenery was still elementary school. Two weeks in, I can say this is not entirely the case. While yes, my children are with two main teachers during the day, and they still sit at desks and are expected to bring in binders and folders and markers and colored pencils, there are some dramatic differences between elementary school and middle school. In a town so focused on social emotional well-being, I was surprised to learn that our 10-year-olds only get one planned recess during the day after lunch. They're not allowed a snack unless they have a doctor's note, and if they have this note, they must eat that snack in the nurse's office. That on several days so far, there have been many, many students who have had three to five minutes to eat their lunch because the lines for meals are so long. I recognize that the desire is that this time decrease as the weeks go by, but if the numbers pulled out, Belmont will be serving at least 25% more meals this year than last year. I understand that some teachers choose to use team time for outside time, and sometimes gym class is held outside. Another surprise? My daughter's gym class, fifth grade, is being held with sixth graders without explanation. So aside from these spontaneous times that teachers choose, there is but one time of perhaps 10 minutes after lunch that is the consistently planned time for our children, our 10-year-olds, to move their bodies with friends outside. This summer, we received communication that Nicolette Foundus had been named principal of the upper elementary school, which will be fourth through sixth grades. I've talked with Superintendent Phelan about my desire to see the school become an extension of the elementary school rather than what is happening to our fifth and even sixth graders at this time. My hope is that as Ms. Foundus transitions into this role and with Ms. Cozza working as the Director of District Configuration Transition, that these aspects of our children's day are taken into serious consideration as we continue to focus not just on our students' educational needs, but their social emotional needs as well. Thank you.
If any of the remote attendees would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand, and I will acknowledge you. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda. I don't have any adjustments to the agenda tonight. So for the chair's report, I want to remind my school committee members and also the public that the school committee will hold a meeting on October 18th, our actual school committee meeting in Boston at the Metco headquarters. So that's an important one to put on your agendas, your calendars. I also want to let my school committee members know that Kate has communicated with the MASC director, Dorothy Presser, about the policy services that we discussed and voted. She sent a contract and a list of documents that we need to gather to begin the process, so I will work with Kate and the district to gather those documents and get that contract signed, given that the school committee already voted to engage with the MASC for this contract, but I wanted to let everybody know that that process is moving forward. And along with that, we did vote our subcommittees last week, and so I encourage everyone to communicate with the central office about, for those people who are representing the central office on your subcommittees, about scheduling meetings at least to elected chair and a secretary of the subcommittees and starting to think about getting your work done for that. I also wanted to mention that last week, it was great to be together in person again for the first time. I think I let the pacing of the meeting at times maybe get a little bit quickened for especially those people who are watching in the public on the screen, and that gets in the way of accessibility for all. So I am reminded that while it is nice to all be together in person, that we are in a public meeting and people are trying to follow along. So just a friendly reminder to everyone to please raise your hand so that I can see it. Please wait to be called on by me. I will try to stay on time throughout the meeting, and when we have a discussion, that might mean that I might ask that we table something until a future meeting or end the discussion because we have enough to make a motion or at least for me to summarize future direction of that. And with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Chairperson Moriarty. I have a very quick report out today from the superintendent's perspective. Last week, we discussed some of the health mitigation opportunities for this year and wanted to make sure that we communicated any updated protocols with the community and the school committee. The presentation we did in early August, we repeated some of those slides last week at our school committee meeting with an update that involved feedback from Director of Nursing Beth Rumley and Director of Health for the Health Department in Belmont West Chin. The next series of questions really revolved around how are we going to go about measuring or assessing or reviewing data in order to determine whether or not any other mitigation strategy should be put in place in our schools, whether it's a classroom or a building or in the district? With those questions in mind, last week, Chairperson Moriarty and I met with West Chin and the Chair of the Board of Health, Julie Lemay. I also put this topic on the agenda of my Middlesex superintendent's meeting on Friday, and also West Chin reached out to some of the neighboring districts, all of whom reported back that there were really no metrics that were being used to measure how we would go about identifying clear rubric or metrics for this decision and whether or not Board of Health needed to vote or school committees needed to vote on what that process was. No one is really embarking on that kind of work. So last week, I, with consultation from the Board of Health and some feedback from Meg and Wes in the health team, I came up with a set of practices that we would enlist as a district in order to assure the public that we were reviewing and constantly monitoring this situation. And I kind of wanted to show those statements on the board so folks can see what they look like at home and here in the school committee meeting. So the next slide is the list of protocols that we would go through and will go through on a regular basis in an effort to be proactive in monitoring the health status of the Belmont Public Schools. First and foremost, the school department and the health department encourages our students and staff and community members to get boosted and fully vaccinated. This can be done by accessing our local community clinics or do so on their own. Our next clinic will be, we believe, October 6th, so please keep an eye out for that event. We already have had one in the community in September. The second bullet would be, we encourage all parents and staff to report any and all positive cases to the school department. This data will be shared with the health department so we collectively monitor cases locally here in Belmont. Third, the school department will continue to monitor cases reported and the attendance rates in each school in an effort to actively review and check for trends that may need to be addressed. This is something that our nurses do on a daily basis, and this is something that our principals will do with their administrative teams on a daily basis. If a trend is detected, the school nursing department administration will consult with the health department to seek guidance and determine if any steps need to be taken to address the spread of any illness, which could include masking in classes, asking students to stay home from school in order to prevent any spread. In essence, we're looking for that professional judgment that had been given to nurses and health departments when the flu was a concern years ago or when other illnesses were spreading in schools in the past. So this kind of language seemed to get very comfortable over the last week. We presented it to the health team. We had some edits done, and we wanted to present it tonight in an effort to show the school committee what our actions would be and continually be through the course of the year. This could, if COVID does have a resurgence, maybe be modified to reflect maybe the concerns due to higher rates of infection. But right now, the comfort level with this list of protocols seems to be acceptable by our Board of Health, our Department of West Chin, our Health Department Chair, and the nursing team in Belmont. Again, after reviewing this with the Middlesex League superintendents, I'm not sure whether they'll start to pick up this as a way to communicate their process in their own towns, but there has been no protocol issued, and so we're trying to create one in order to give the community a sense of understanding of how we would approach this work.
Jamal?
So I think what I'm hearing is because there's no threshold that we can all feel comfortable with, we're going to use trends. The trends, as more cases in the community happens, there's going to be the trend to have more kids out of school. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's a spread inside the school. So how do we distinguish these two? I think it'd be good to hear what the experts think about that since that's what's being put here as a metric we'll look at. And if it is being monitored, will we get... Will we get notified what these trends look like in time as part of what the schools are already determining? Just like we know how many are vaccinated, we know how many are actually leaving, how many students are not attending school. If this is a critical measure, should we be getting that information back to the school committee? I guess that's what I'm asking.
I did not plan on providing that information to the school committee. If that's something that the school committee would like to see on a regular basis, that would be something that if you want to ask, we can talk to the health team and see how we can coordinate that in a consistent way. Please keep in mind, we're taking this data. The health department gets positive cases called in by community members, so that's one input source. The other is when a parent or guardian will call in or a staff member will call in, and we note that and we relay that to the school, to the health department. So we have our own Google Doc, which has these numbers of cases in the schools that we're using to identify trends. It's right now not a published document, from what I understand through the practitioners.
I guess I'm concerned about the interpretation of trends when you have a disparity between what's being monitored at the school versus what's being monitored in the community. The community is not reporting to the health department whether they have a positive test in the household, but potentially that's actually what's happening in the schools. And so how do we interpret whether the trends of increase week after week, month after month, is because of spread within the school or whether this is part of, you know, community spread in general? So I just wanted to be careful about how the interpretation would be.
So I can ask Beth and Wes to weigh in on that question.
And I also, when we were in that meeting, I guess the other piece of that that I heard at the time just from Wes and from the Chair of the Board of Health was that when they were, I took trends, and again, we can check in with them to mean a trend of, you know, 10 kids in a classroom and a teacher or something being out, and then do we address that classroom? A trend of one of our schools having, you know, a large number of students who are out. So, you know, I think there's also the looking at the nuances of within a class, within a school versus on a district or a town level. And that they were essentially saying the people on the ground, which are our nurses, have the best read on that, and that's why the levels of communication are going to be really important as we move forward. Again, we can have a larger conversation with them if that's what people want, but I do think that they felt like there just wasn't something that they could hang their hat on at this point.
If I could, the other part of that conversation was that in an effort to give the flexibility to the professionals who are actually doing the work, because some of these decisions might have to be made on a very quick timeline. So coming up with a way in which to monitor the data and then make decisions based on what they're seeing in attendance rates in cases being called in, as Meg had described, gives them the flexibility to do so very quickly if they need to. And quite frankly, we need to do that today. We have six students in a class of 22 that over the weekend have been called in as COVID positive and have to check in with them. We are going to send something to that classroom that says, this is what's going on in your classroom. Please wear a mask. We'll take steps to mitigate for lunch for this small group. So that's the flexible, school by school, class by class kind of action that we want to be able to do in order to mitigate any spread in that classroom.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
I do have, Jeff has a comment, and then we can move on. Jeff?
Thank you, Meg. Superintendent Phelan, from your interactions, and maybe this is a question for you too, Meg, with the Board of Health and with the Health Department, what's your sense of the locus of decision-making when a decision has to be taken that's greater than a recommendation in a particular class? Because for the purposes of this conversation, I think we can agree that a class means an elementary class where middle school students and high school students travel from class to class. So I'm just thinking about as the grain size gets bigger, who makes the call? Because I think that's been a source of some confusion and some community division in the past. It'd be useful to clarify tonight if we could.
So Jeff, I think I can answer that question. We did call this case into the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. They have a line just for COVID cases that they kept open this year, that they have had open for the last two years. The feedback from DESI was that the school nurses in the school department did not have the right to, or the legal right to mandate masking and/or any other intervention. Only the local Board of Health could do that. So for our purposes, we want to go through that chain of command where our nurses collect data, they see a trend, they report it to the Director of Nursing. We meet with the Director of our local Health Department, which then will check in with the Board of Health for their guidance. So if in fact this expands to be some sort of a scaling up of concern, I think these mitigation measures might change or the communication might change or the how we collect data may change. But right now, this seems to be the flexible way that we would handle it, and it seems to be in line with what DESI is guiding us to do as well. And we had that phone call as recently as 4:30 tonight.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And so I presume the Board of Health is prepared to have emergency meetings as needed if cases spike in such a way that would require that. Is that fair to say?
We checked in with the Chair of the Board of Health, the Director did, so I don't know if that's going to be a full board meeting or not. I believe that would be something that they would have to discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
On a positive note, we're really excited to announce that the 100th football game on Thanksgiving between Belmont and Watertown will take place at Fenway Park on the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. This is really something that I think the community will enjoy. Adam Pritchett, our athletic director, has been working with folks from the Fenway group, and we were fortunate enough to be able to secure a spot to hold this game. So we will begin communicating with the public and our families and our students and our student athletes about how they can access tickets and how we can begin to plan for that. So just a bit of good news as we start the year, and that's the end of my superintendent's update.
Thank you. For the approval of minutes tonight, those are the August 3rd, which was a joint meeting with the Select Board. I was not at that meeting, nor was Mike Crowley. Amy, if I could turn that over to you, because I know you might already have some edits that you want to incorporate.
Yes, so I received one suggested edit from Jeff to the minutes, so it sounds like the four of us would be potentially approving those this evening. And procedurally, I think, because these are actually minutes taken by the Select Board, we'll just extract the part that is relevant to the school committee and format those so it's clear that if we approve amended minutes, you know, that decision was made on our end. The suggestion is on page six. There was an exchange between Jeff and Roy Epstein, and Jeff would like to reflect that he responded to Roy's comment that's in the minutes, that the financial position of the town is more complex than it was four years ago when the size of the Select Board was last considered by town meeting. I do recall that comment as well, so I would suggest just adding that sentence. And if there's any other comments about the minutes, folks should say. Any other... Is everyone ready to approve? Is there a motion?
A move to approve with the amendments provided by Jeff Liberty.
Thank you. Kate, is there a second?
Second.
Jamal has won the race to second, and so let's just do a roll call.
Oh, and I?
Check away. Aye.
Liberty, aye.
Aye.
So that's towards you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so on to our major business items. So the first item tonight is about music fees. To remind all of us here and anybody else, on September 6th, in his update, the superintendent brought to our attention a longstanding fee for elementary and middle school music, specifically band and orchestra. He informed us that after his conversation, which he had already had with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that he recommended that the school committee cancel this fee. I have also checked with our legal counsel, who has also recommended that we cancel this fee. So I'm aware that members may still have some questions or points for discussion, and we do have Arturo Asadorian, Director of Performing Arts, here. However, I do not see this as an option, given that the advice from DESI and our legal counsel to cancel this fee. I do think there's the potential discussion around doing so this year versus next year. So I will open it up to the superintendent for his presentation, and then I will take questions and comments from the school committee members in terms of the timing of canceling this fee.
So thank you, Chairperson Moriarty. It is the recommendation of myself, guidance from DESI and the recommendation from DESI as well as our legal counsel that we stop this fee this year. This fee has been charged to fourth-grade students who participate in strings and to fifth-grade students who participate in chorus and/or strings, I'm sorry, band and/or strings, but it could also attend chorus classes if they chose to. This fee originated in 2008 when budget challenges came to the district. After a period of time, Arturo Asadorian and his role as director worked with the administration to change how we offered music in the fifth-grade level. We reorganized the music program in an effort to make it more equitable and accessible to all students and give choice. After that point in time, the fee remained in place, and we were reminded that this fee was inequitable. And when it was recommended by DESI in our conversations with them, we decided to bring it to the attention of the school committee and cease that process. There's a memo in your packet that was emailed to you that outlines the financial side of this. The two sides that we obviously are struggling with is the equity side of access for all students to be able to participate and the budget needs, which is the healthy tension between these two issues that started this back in 2008. Essentially, this revolving account takes in roughly $100,000 a year, and the offsets of these dollars go to paying the teachers that support the music program in grade four and grade five. If we were to provide reimbursement for anybody who paid a fee this year and apply the current balance in this revolving account to the expenses of those educators this year, we would be able to leave the year with a minimal $18,000 potential deficit in this one line, which we think is something that we can overcome because we think it's the right thing to do, and we believe that frankly, it's going to be a DESI mandate if we decide not to do it. The discussion of whether this is good to do this year or next year, I asked that question directly to DESI this afternoon, and they recommended doing it this year. It is not within their... They believe that this fee is not allowable from the way that they view public school, and waiting a year would not be something that they would recommend. So we can go into the impact of what that may be on the music program in the future when we start thinking about budget for next year, but we are able to reimburse folks and maintain the program this year and have this discussion as part of our larger budget discussion for FY '24. Just to add that there was a part of this that revolved around folks, family members renting equipment or renting instruments. We do not, as a school department, rent the instruments to families. We provide a third-party service, and if a family would like to do so, they can. And when I reviewed that item with DESI, they said because it was a third party and it was an option for them to take advantage if they wanted to, that would not be considered something that would be a fee that would need to be eliminated. That process could continue as it does right now.
Okay, so thank you, John, and I will open it up to the school committee for questions. Jamal?
I have a few questions. I'll start with some of them, others have some questions. But one clarifying question about the instrument rental. I know that we, there are ways to help students who cannot afford rental of instruments. Can you clarify how this information gets to parents so that it doesn't become a burden for them to go looking for that information or decide a priori not to participate because they can't afford it?
So we, I'm going to ask Arturo to come up and address that issue. That is true not only for how we do the instruments, but also how we had been charging pieces in the past that folks did have access to partial payment or no payment, given this situation. But I will describe that for you.
Hi, Jamal. I'm Art.
We're still figuring out where to sit.
I'm Art Asadorian. I'm the Director of Visual Performing Arts. If I understand your question, it's just how is the information made available to families so that they know that financial assistance is available? We do a lot of work on that starting end of August and actually just wrapping up this past Friday. That's our registration period for third-grade strings and for fourth, sorry, for fourth-grade strings and for fifth-grade band chorus and orchestra. A lot of the communication goes out electronically, probably two or three times a week. We're sending emails and reminders, stuff on the website. We have a process by which families can request a fee. They send financial information into my office. We review it and respond to them with, actually, it's the school committee has a grid that we adhere to in terms of number of people per household, and it's based on average income or whatever the term is that we're using. in terms of number of people per household, and it's based on average income or net, whatever the term is that we're using. Once we have determined a family's eligibility for a waiver, we share that with our third-party vendor, who is David French Music. Anyone who is eligible for any percentage of a waiver in Belmont, David French Music provides them with a free instrument to use. So, which really, quite honestly, separates them from any other vendor in the state, because most vendors will cap that at 5 to 10 per year. And this year, David French Music is providing our students with 53 free instruments, which is a huge cost to them, but they're great partners. We also share that information with Powers Music School. Powers operates Saturday Morning Music School now. And so they will also apply the same waiver that we award for our in-school program towards tuition at Saturday Morning Music School. So those same 53 students that are receiving free instruments from Powers also have access to reduced or free tuition to Saturday Morning Music School. Powers also has a program called Belmont Scotters, which actually provides free private lessons to students who qualify once they're in their second year of instrument study, so, which is a major cost. Those lessons cost about $80 an hour if you pay for them, and Powers is providing them at free or reduced cost for the students who qualify. So we do our very best to get that information out, because it benefits our music programs as well for students to be taking advantage of it. And we, just to start, as I'm thinking, if we were to not have to collect this fee anymore, we would still go through this process of having, we would have to do something to have families qualify for free instruments and the tuition at Saturday Morning Music School. So the waiver process would still exist, and we would still do all that outreach and communication about it, but the one step that would be taken away would be the need to pay the fee to the Belmont Public Schools.
Thanks, Arturo. I think this is super helpful. I think the premise of this is that it's around the equity, and it's difficult to expect that parents would just be able to afford all of this. And I guess the question is, if you were to ask families whether they've consciously made a decision to not sign up for instruments rather than go through this process, do we have data on that to know whether there is this selective shuttling away from instruments at cost?
I don't, I can't say that we would have data, because I don't know how we would, I guess we could survey families about it, but I don't know that we'd get enough responses to have it be, you know, mathematically useful. But I can tell you anecdotally that we know, just from talking to kids in school, that they'll say, why really, you know, I wanted to play the clarinet, but, you know, my mom said it's too much money, so I'm not doing it. And that could mean also the instrument rental, you know, or the fee, but so there definitely is that piece of, that there is an obstacle, right? That some families will say, and also, just to be fair, the process that we ask them to go through to apply for the waiver is not easy. I mean, we're asking them to share their tax information with us. Not everybody has ready access to those documents. There are some families that can send it off within minutes, and then there are others that, in fact, we get messages every week saying we don't have a tax form. What do we do? And so then we have to get creative with how we determine a family's eligibility. So it's not easy. It can be invasive and embarrassing, to be honest.
I know that you and the team do a tremendous job with the program and having an eye on equity there. I would like to see if there's anything, any more data that we can collect to make sure that we are doing our best to reach out as many of our students and families. So given that the focus right now is specifically on the financial aspect of that, it'll be great to get more information. But if we are leaving families behind because of cost, it would be great if we can get some update on that in a future meeting.
Jeff, Liberty?
Thank you. Just picking up on the theme that Jamal was just on, it seems like one way to collect such data could be to reach out to the families of students who are in choir right now and ask them if they are in choir because they have an innate love of singing or if there is some financial obstacle. And in doing that, assuming we agree that we're going to abolish this fee, it seems like that would be the precipitating event for that communication, just to make sure families are proactively being advised that that's not an obstacle any longer. So that's a suggestion. And I just, for my own sake and for the purposes of the public, I just want to fully understand what the fee that we're considering abolishing does and doesn't cover, because we've talked about instrument rentals being sort of separate and apart from the fee. So I'm curious if we can just succinctly say what the fee covers and doesn't cover.
I mean, my understanding is that that fee offsets the cost of teacher salaries. Students are providing the instruments through rentals, or David French Music is providing them through scholarship instruments. So the fee is used entirely to offset the cost of teacher salaries.
Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of proportion, the revolving funds for the music program haven't, they've come down over time, right? It's not been a, that total amount in revolving associated music has come down overall in the last few years. Is that correct?
I would refer to Tony. I think the balance has slowly or just accrued eventually incrementally over time, and that's why that balance is there. And that's why we have one year's worth that we can offset, but I would let Tony answer that question.
Proportionally, as I look back at the budget, we have squeezed that, like made it less so in terms of the fees we're collecting generally.
The fee, I don't know if you've, this may not be a question, but the fee per student has not changed. It's the amount of the fees that we're collecting versus the amount that we're charging. I think a few years ago, there was a long time veteran music teacher who retired, and that person that was then replacing, that person was a little bit less expensive, and so the cost to the program was a little bit less. And so there was some, you know, ups and downs in the program over time. Not so much this program, but in general, we look at revolving account revenues and expenses every year. And to the extent that any program might be kind of very thin on its margins and revenues are close to outpace, excuse me, or expenses may be close to outpacing revenues, as we go to the end of the year, we may offset some of the revolving account expenses and charge those expenses back to the corresponding lines in the Jet Alt Fund just to shore up that account. So that may be part of what you're seeing, but the sure, the fee per student has not changed over the years.
And also, in previous times, we had a Saturday musical program revolving account that when that transitioned over to our school, that revolving account has since been disbanded.
We've also used some of those funds probably twice in the, you know, however long it's been, 15 years or so that we've charged it, where we've had to purchase some equipment for that, for the 4th grade program or the 5th grade program, like music stands and storage racks we have at the Wellington now because we needed them, instrument storage racks and things like that. So those, rarely those equipment costs have come from that account, too.
So, you know, if I can, I'm supportive of eliminating the fee. I think the question of whether some families choose their program based on whether it's a fee or not is absolutely true. It's certainly consideration, and there's, you know, stigma around not being able to be in the program and potentially, or choosing something, because it's perceived as less than, even though I don't think that's true in fact, in terms of a good music program. It's a good music program whether you're doing chorus or violin or whatever you choose. So it sounds like there's support to eliminate the fee. I certainly support that. My concern is we are going to be looking for $100,000 to make up, and that's kind of been a consistent number as I'm looking back at the budget, that has come from that source. And I know we were making hard decisions last spring, just in terms of finding personnel to cover what I would say is productive ratios in the choral program specifically. So I just want to voice that, because there's a lot of, I think we know there's a lot of benefits to being in music programs and specifically to the math skills. So I'm voicing that, because I am concerned about the program of law. Maybe you could shed a little bit of light on, if you're seeing impacts, I know we've had some changes Saturday morning, which is one of its own kind of beast. And then 3rd grade is a different program now than it was.
So one perspective I would share is that, so the 4th grade string program, 5th grade band and orchestra program is really our single entry point at this point for kids to get into the instrumental music program, to get into band or orchestra. We, of course, will let kids sign up in 7th grade or 8th grade. Sure, yeah. We will let kids sign up whenever they want to sign up, but we only offer beginning-level instruction in 4th grade or 5th grade. So we're devoting, we're devoting more, we're devoting resources there that are probably more in line with typical classroom-student-teacher ratios. But the payoff comes later in middle school and certainly in high school, where we have classrooms, like at the middle school, we've got 100 kids in a classroom with two teachers. So the student-teacher ratio there is much, you're getting a lot more bang for your buck at that level. The issue is that once, if we eliminated these programs at the beginning level and those programs go away in middle and high school, you still have to put those kids somewhere, right? So right now, at the high school, you've got a band with 84 kids and one teacher. And if there was no high school band program, because there's no elementary band program, then those 84 kids now need to go to four classrooms at Belmont High School, each with one teacher, you know what I mean? Instead of a band room with their one teacher. So all this to say, I think the educational, social, musical, artistic benefits are reason enough to advocate for the program, but there is a financial benefit to supporting these programs at the lower level, because as that becomes the core of our music instruction moving forward, and once the bottom of it goes away, once the beginning level goes away, you won't have a high school symphonic band, wind ensemble, orchestra anymore. And then we've got to find other classrooms for those kids to sit in all day long.
Could I just raise something, too? This is a conversation that Arturo and I had when this subject came up earlier. Breaking down that barrier for families will allow all families to be able to participate in whatever program they want. And I'm excited that we're going to see more students taking part in bands and strings, and that will build up a more robust program in those two areas. Our job is to find the funding to make sure that that can happen for our kids. It's still, it's the right choice to do. It's good for kids. It breaks down barriers. It allows choice based on what I'd like to do, not first is what I can or can't ask my family to afford, and whether they can provide the documents. So the hope is that we increase our participation in those areas of music. And I think with a robust Saturday program and a tutoring program that's facilitated through schools but done by private folks really rounds out the programming that's very unique in Belmont, and hopefully will continue at high numbers.
Can I ask? I'm going to let Amy speak, and then I can come back.
Yeah, this is more, I think, a comment to the school committee, just that, well, first of all, I really hope that as a school committee and as a community, we can continue to have a robust music program for as many grades as possible. Second, it probably goes without saying that it would have been better to have had this discussion had we known about this issue as part of the regular budget process, because it puts us in a challenging position, especially given our budget this year. I support removing the fees based on what Superintendent shared this year. And I also think that, in my opinion, a conversation next year should not just be about now that these fees have gone away, how do we support these two teachers or however many staff, it's sort of overall, what is the budget picture and what are our priorities? I know we've had that revenue source in the past, but for something that's offered during the day as part of the sort of typical curriculum, it just seems, again, like this is going to be a large, I mean, we're going to face challenges in many areas. But just want to express, I feel pretty strongly, we should do this. It's the right thing to do. And I am concerned about the budget, and I wish, you know, I wish we could have taken care of this as part of the larger discussion that we had in the spring.
Just want to respond that this year's budget will not be impacted, because the balance in the revolving account will be able to be, will offset the personnel charges that we have for this fiscal year. It's next, so this year is fine. It's next year that we have to worry about. The balance in the revolving account will pay for the offsets that it had been planned on paying for. So this year is going to be an $18,000 potential negative if all those numbers work out that way. Next year is the year where we have to decide.
No, that makes sense. And John, and so just to clarify, that $18,000 balance is if we also refund the fees from this year. Okay. And so, Arturo, if I could just ask a quick question, is, and just really logistically, are we going to be able to refund those fees to families for this year if that is in fact the call? And then the second part of that is, I've heard my school committee members speak about equity and access for all students. Are we able to make sure that we announce or let students know that now there is no fee such that if this year, and I understand that this can be challenging for teachers, because now they might have students coming in a month later, but so that this year, students would be able to take advantage of this, just those two pieces?
Yeah, for sure. So yes, we can refund fees. We collect fees in two ways. We use the electronic, the online fee payments through MySchoolBox. And so those are right now sitting in whatever account that goes to. We always have a process to issue refunds to individual parents. Often, that's because they paid the wrong, they paid one fee instead of the other, so we have to refund one and they pay the other. It could be that unexpectedly, they move two weeks into the school year, so we, there is a process to refund individual parents. This would be, we'd have to do like a large-scale refund of everyone who's paid the fee online. And I'm not sure exactly how many have already paid the fee online. I'll say that most families right now are paying the fees by paper check, just because the online system charges them a transaction fee. And so most families have mailed in checks that are currently sitting in a safe at Belmont High School. And so if the fee is eliminated, we will either return those checks to folks or we'll just void them and shred them, and then just have to worry about refunding the online fees. And then the second question, sorry, Meg, was about what if kids didn't sign up for an instrument last week and now they want to? Then we'll give them the opportunity to do that, yeah.
Thank you. Kate, I want to come back.
And just as you were talking about the instruments themselves, it's incredible that the French company can provide those instruments, and that's a large quantity. And it's great to hear that. And I wonder, as we go down the line in terms of budget questions, if there's, you know, what their capacity is, and if we, as a district, might be thinking about acquiring our own instruments over time and how we might sustain that so they're really truly accessible. And that's probably not an answer you have right now, but I would like to...
We do have instruments for students.
We provide like larger instruments, yeah, and things, and we do have some of like the small, when I say smaller instruments, I mean like saxophones and trumpets and things that normally would go back and forth. We provide, you know, tubas and the large instruments and things like that. You know, certainly would be, we could have a conversation about like what it would take to just acquire our own stock of scholarship instruments to make available to students. We've been fortunate that David French Music has been so generous. And so as long as they are our instrument vendor, we hope that that will continue. If we ever switch vendors at some point, we may not be so fortunate.
And to be clear, I'm asking not simply for scholarship students. I think there's a, you know, there's a lot, there's a range, right? Of students who are interested in, and knowing that there's something readily available for them at school can make a significant difference when they're there. Can afford to rent or not afford, or there's somewhere in between. I'll find those, a lot of factors there. So flagging that.
Thank you, Kate. That's a, it's a good point to make that we can continue to think about. And I'm going to take one more comment from Ms. Washington.
I just wanted to name something.
Yes.
And I don't know if this is what people mean, but access and equity are not the same.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's it. So we are doing a lot to increase access to this program, but we'll probably have a lot more to do, would you say, Arturo, to make it like a fully equitable program at the school?
Yes.
And that's true.
Yes. So I would say that the access part of it is, you know, the communication, the fee waivers and things like that. The equity piece of it, and I'm sort of testing myself, Chantel, so I want you to tell me if I have it right. And I I'm sort of testing myself, Chantel, so I want you to tell me if I have right, that the equity piece of it, I think, is part of like Superintendent Phelan mentioned before, when we revamped our fifth grade music program, gosh, it was probably seven years ago or so now. That was really based at improving the the equity of the program because we had a program before where if you took private lessons and you, you know, could go to New England Conservatory Conservatory Programs, you did really well in our music program. But what we were actually offering during the school day wasn't really sufficient. So we fixed that. And then I think our partnership with Powers Music School in terms of providing free private lessons and access to Saturday School is a big equity step as well to just make sure that every student in town has access to even the outside of school programs that are, that we all know, like for years, those those have supported our that, you know, the overall excellence of the music program is is is, I think, in a large part because of what we do in school, but also because of what kids are doing outside of school. So making sure that everybody has access to those programs, I think, helps with the equity issue.
Last comment.
Last comment.
I I just want to pick up on something that Superintendent said that says what's good for students, this is what's good for the program, this is what's good for 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 the school as a whole. And I agree wholeheartedly. And the second part of what he said was, it is our job to find the budget to do it. True. But we also need to think about it in there with respect to everything else that we want to make sure that's good for students, that's good for the, for the schools and good for the community. We have, I have to, I have to say this because we're gonna have to start saying this in every single meeting when we're talking about budget. We do have a structural deficit. And while we cannot cut our way to the structural deficit, we cannot continue to add things that will exacerbate the structural deficit. As small as this is, a hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars, it adds to the structural deficit next year. So it's gonna have to come as part of the conversation going forward. If we're adding a hundred thirty-one thousand here, what are we cutting from our budget? Another hundred thirty thousand.
Where does that come from for next year?
Where does it come from? Because our job, that's our job. Our job is to balance our budget from within our budget.
So what we, so what we learned, what we learned in September of this year was that charging fees is not a way that we can offset that because some things you can't charge fees for, like athletics and after school programs. And I guess my response to Amy would be, would you have cut the fee in the spring, had we brought her up in the spring if it came to our attention? Was that even a subject in the spring? Because when you say, I wish we could talk about this in the spring, all the fees were present in the spring. So if anybody at this table wanted to cut fees last year, that could have been part of the discussion to help support the budget.
Amy can answer this, but I can tell you, since I was raising this question, this conversation becomes a balance between everything else that you want to do. So the conversation becomes, we have to cut this because this is not right. But we don't have to offer X, Y, and Z. And that's what, that's a discussion that that becomes part of the conversation. And unfortunately, I hate to be that person, but this is a conversation that's gonna be in every single budget situation. Our job is to balance the budget that we have. It is the job of the taxpayer, it's the job of the, of the parent to decide whether they want to fund our schools more or not. But that's a different conversation we don't have ownership of. Right? We are steward of the, of the budget that we have. And, you know, I know that you all know that, but I don't want to, you know, the parent who made the decision not to, not to enroll their child in clarinet because it's too expensive, made the fiscal choice, and we need to make very similar choices.
I think that will be the common theme of all of our budget discussions this year. I would agree with that. There will be choices that folks are gonna have to make throughout the year, especially the following year as well.
Okay, so for, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna just respectfully say I had said that that was the last comment. I do think that this is gonna continue to be a larger part of our budget discussion, and I I respect the fact that every school committee member right now has these concerns. I also hear a support for discontinuing these fees. I think we all understand that we have to do this. I'm going to put forward a motion to see if somebody will second it. If you are not in line with the motion that I put forward, you may choose to offer an amended motion. But the motion that I would put forward is that the school committee discontinues the practice of charging fees for band, orchestra, and string lessons during the school day and refund those fees paid during, for the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Amy?
I would suggest adding the grades, being really clear about what we are talking about. So fourth and fifth grade music. Right?
Is it just
Fourth grade strings and fifth grade band and orchestra.
Great.
And and to be clear, it's not string lessons, right? Or the Oh, I see.
Strings program.
String program.
There is no longer a third grade program.
Right. No, I was just cutting up on the word lessons because that sounded individualized.
And I apologize, Chair, for some ready. I think I should have formally put forward a friendly amendment that somebody else should second if they agree with.
That's okay. Do you want me to read what I have again? That the school committee discontinues the practice of charging fees for fourth grade strings and fifth grade band and orchestra during the school day and refund the fees paid this year or for the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Let me do a roll call.
Bowen and I.
Check away, I.
Liberty, I.
Si, abstain only because we didn't have a choice in the matter and we didn't have an opportunity to balance appropriately last year.
More ready, yeah.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order. And it's just to do with a question in the chat from the public. I don't know how we want to handle those or just even respond about how we might respond.
Sure, Jeff. Thank you for calling to, that's my attention. I didn't know that chat was being used. I did say that the public comment period is the time for a public comment and that I I will not be taking comments after each agenda item.
So might we capture that question and just respond as if it were offered in the public comment section, just in the spirit in which it was offered?
Okay, I I'm sorry, I'm not on chat right now. Typically, that is disabled.
Okay, I can just capture it and send it along and then we can decide later what we want to do. I just wanted to acknowledge because it was there.
Thank you, Jeff. That would be wonderful if you could take care of that. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item is custodial fees. So this is an agenda item that we actually took up at our last meeting. So in follow-up to the discussion and the feedback during the summer September thirteenth school committee meeting, Tony reaffirmed that the same amounts that he had recommended for custodial fee changes for external details were the same that he would recommend. And he sent that memo. So Tony, would you like to say anything else or reiterate anything that was in your memo? And then I will open it up for any additional questions or comments from the school committee. Realizing that we already did have a discussion on this last week.
Just by, excuse me, just by way of context, we're increasing the fees because the rates of the custodial workers that perform these details have increased through the recent collective bargaining agreement that was settled. The rates being recommended or requested are the lowest possible increases on sort of around five dollar increment to minimize the impact on the external users that would be paying these fees. And these these fees would not have to be reset for FY twenty-three or FY twenty-four. I'll have to look at FY twenty-five and beyond when the current contract for the custodial rates expires at the end of FY twenty-four.
Thank you. Any school, any members have any additional questions or comments from last week? Great. Then I'm gonna offer a motion and this one I actually had some help with. So we'll see how it goes and if somebody could second it if they approve. Moved that effective September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the rates for custodial details for the use of school spaces by external groups be increased to time and a half hourly overtime rate Monday through Saturday increased from forty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Double time overtime rate Sundays and holidays increased from sixty dollars to seventy dollars. Can I get a roll call?
Bowen and I.
Check away, I.
Liberty, I.
Si, hi.
More ready, I. Thank you very much. And Tony, thank you for following up on all that. Okay, so also something that we discussed last week, coming back again, is the fiscal year twenty-three budget adjustment related to the English language position or positions. And I apologize, I didn't not have time to read the information that came this afternoon. So I think that Janice is actually gonna present to the school committee on some updated information. And then we will have the opportunity to ask questions or comments following that. Thank you, Janice.
So I will start us off and then I will ask Director Lindsay to to come up to the podium as as well and answer questions. What the two documents that were shared with you this afternoon, and apologies for the the late sending. One is the ELA program size as of September sixteenth, last Friday. So that includes all of the students who were registered by then. And shows you at the bottom row of page one that the additional FTE need is two point O. And that includes having point four from one of the elementary schools be reallocated to another school because of a decrease at one school, that's the Burbank School, and increases at other schools. The the second page of that document makes a comparison between the September of twenty twenty-one and the current year and where we we are as a reliable estimate. Right now, we're at four hundred and fifteen students, maybe four hundred and sixteen as of today, four hundred and twenty with kids that are still in the pipeline, still being assessed. And it shows you that if with some estimation involved, that if we continue to receive students at the current rate and the current trajectory, that we we could continue to have a need beyond the two point O that we're talking about. It's just to to have a placeholder right now, the the ask right now is the two point O. I would just add a note, and I learned this from talking with Lindsay today, that we are not the only district seeing such a a market increase in English language, English learners that many other districts are actually seeing a significantly higher increase in in students in this student population. And then the third page shows you that our group sizes in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two were, quite a few of them were oversized in terms of the number of students that is appropriate to have in a group. The other document that we shared with you is a spreadsheet, and this was in response to a question that a member, Bowen, presented last, last week, asking about how it sometimes is not just the number of students, but it's the number of students at which proficiency level and knowing that the service requirement for students who are very beginning learners of English are significantly higher and sometimes at a rate of two to one. And therefore, the column, and and in particular, I'll bring you to the chart at the very bottom of that page that shows that we can bring the ratios down to a manageable level with the additional two point O for a total of fourteen point two across the district. Whereas if we have the current twelve point two, quite a few of the ratios are above forty and some above fifty students to one teacher when you're looking in particular at the the weighted or the looking at it for at at the service level requirement of each of the students in the program. And with that, I would invite you to come to the podium and answer any further questions or clarify things that I might have explained not exactly.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to come back again today. I'm always happy to share more information. We we are actually at four thirty-two as of this moment. And so unfortunately, that does mean there is a chart on the second page of document.
The Word document.
Yeah, the Word or the Google Doc, twenty twenty-two intake notes, where you see a chart of where the year on your gain of seventy plus students, that number actually is eighty, eighty plus students. And so as Jana said, this is, we are seeing, we, so this is, this means we have about a twenty-two percent increase year on year in program size. When I compare almost exactly this date last year to now. And I am in communication with other L directors. I think Waltham has seen an even bigger increase, but both Newton and Watertown also have between twenty and twenty-two percent increase in their program size. And I think what that tells us is this is really about the pace of immigration to the United States in addition to demographic change. You know, there are, fortunately for this country, increasing numbers of of children born in multilingual homes where they will get to become bilingual or multilingual in in the home environment, the best way to to possibly achieve that. But it isn't something that's just happening in this district. It's it's not about, you know, our systems or practices. It is something that's being experienced all the way around the country and and in our neighborhood as well.
Questions from any school committee members? Jeff?
So I appreciate the additional documents in the context. I didn't have much of a chance to review them before now, but they seem fairly straightforward. I wanted to ask a couple of questions and one question and one statement. The statement I want to make is that I think that a percentage of the new growth in the need for additional FTEs was unknown, right? But I think as we discussed and explored last meeting, a portion of it could have been known or potentially could have been projected at an earlier stage of last school year, such that it could have been included in the discussion about the budget for this year. So I just want to make that point, even though I want to recognize the growth across the Commonwealth and perhaps across the country. The question I want to ask is kind of related to that because I think we don't want to come back and come back again, particularly in a hard hiring moment in the history of education and in the in the current school year. So how close are we if we decide that we're gonna authorize these two positions to needing a third position? Like, you know, are we five students away at one level as projected? I know you don't have a crystal ball, but just to have some insight would be helpful.
Yes, I can actually answer that. So I think we're really close. In working through scheduling, so I've been spending quite a lot of time with the elementary team working through scheduling. And I can tell you that, for example, at the Butler School, if we get one more foundational in first grade or one more foundational student in fourth grade, we will have to add five more hours of service time. We have very sort of we we we're employing some hacks to be able to service the students right now in first grade foundational and fourth grade foundational that will not be tenable if we got one more student in first grade. In fourth grade, it would not be tenable if we got a student. So I'm getting into too much detail, but we are, we're able to look at the individual needs of the, you know, students in those grades right now and meet them right now. But if one additional student moves in in fourth grade who doesn't, doesn't have oral survival English, then we are not going to be able to to meet the needs. And and it would take another another five hours. So the other issue we're running into, there there's a number of things that are that are difficult. Teachers are having to, which is fine. They're licensed for it and they're all capable professionals, but they're teaching out of the grade areas that they normally teach. And they're taking on new preps. So, for example, in order to make ends meet, we have a teacher who's going to have six preps at the, six different preps at the elementary level. That's a lot. And, you know, when you, when you have a case load of thirty-plus students and and there's a lot of very individual needs going on, there's already a lot of individualization happening. But to have to add, you know, normally a teacher would have four preps at, an elementary L teacher would have four preps. So we're really tight. And September is always the smallest month, the, you know, the lowest enrollment month for our program. So we're we're at four thirty-two right now. But I'm looking at students, you know, in the pipeline right now. But I'm looking at students, you know, in the pipeline right now. So I know we've got a few more who, based on their home language surveys, don't speak any English. Will be joining our district soon. And and I think not just what I can see in front of me, but my my experience year after year with the trajectory of growth within the program tells me that by November, we're going to be in a lot of trouble.
Thank you. I don't think that was too much information. That was a precise answer and I appreciate it.
Ask, I'm going to ask a quick question. Um, Lindsay, do we ever, so we're talking about FTEs here. I certainly believe that's what's best for our students, also keeping in mind the budget and and also some of the uncertainty. Do we ever use contractual services? Could you speak to anything in terms of whether you see that as as something that we could fill the gaps with versus hiring an FTE for these positions?
Yeah, that's that's not something that we've ever used. And to my knowledge, there are no agencies that exist to fill those needs. It's not something I've heard of being done in this field. I I know how it's done in special ed.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this piece of information came up tonight. I apologize if it already did. But so these are mandated services that we require. I know we had a conversation last time about how, you know, it's appropriate for the school committee to discuss this and I think approve it, but it seems, I'm not sure that there's an, it seems like we need to staff the program so that we can serve the number of students. Unless something here, so I guess I would, I think the only question is for efficiency, if there's something we want to do beyond the 2.0 FTE tonight to authorize something, that would be my suggestion, at least in terms of what we consider tonight. But just want to hear if there's any disagreement with how to proceed in terms of the level of FTEs needed to require the mandated services. Or any other information from, you know, district staff that we should consider beyond what's already been shared?
John, do you have a feeling on that?
Right now recommending the two FTEs for our EL students and staff would be very much appreciated.
So I will, is there a motion wording that we should be using or?
Make that motion.
I'm not very good at this, but I will move that we approve the addition of 2.0 FTEs or the equivalent to support EL services to in response to the increased enrollment as soon as possible.
There's no need for clarification specific to this year.
Fiscal year 23.
Yeah, fiscal year for 23.
For this school year.
School year.
Yeah.
Second.
Kate gets the second roll call.
Bowen and I.
Check away, I.
Liberty, I.
Say hi.
Moriarty, I. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay, for coming back again. Great. So we will not be taking a vote on the next final item of major business. These are the district priorities. They're being presented to the school committee for a second time. We did have a joint retreat with the central office, who took feedback from the school committee members and now have incorporated that feedback into the proposed work plan for the district priorities. And like I said, the school committee will not be taking a vote on this work plan, but certainly after the presentation, I will open it up for questions and comments from the school committee. And I guess one question I did have for central office is, would you like those questions and comments after each of the three presentations? Or would you like us to hold those questions and comments until the end of the entire presentation?
I think we'd like to have those questions at the end.
Okay, great.
So thank you for that lead in, Chairperson Moriarty. The the school administration has been working over the summer and watching the emerging challenges that we see in the district and the work plan that we need to put in place. Trying to prioritize the many things that go on in our schools each year, especially in the year that we have in the 2022, 23 school year. There are a lot of different components of the work that we would like to focus on and will carry out. But there are three that have emerged to be the most important that we wanted. Make sure we keep the main thing, the main thing in those three areas are budget for the 23, 24 school year. The configuration work of our district moving from a six school district to a seven school district as we move half of our channery students from the current channery to the new in opening of our seven to 12 Belmont Middle High School in Carncott Ave in September of 23. And also the continuation of the equity work that we're doing in the district that was highlighted last year by the audit that we did and carrying out some of the challenge, carrying out some of the work to establish systems in the district to support equity and access in in the Belmont Public Schools. So those three areas were outlined to the school committee in a meeting, I believe, on August 30. The feedback that we heard during that time was trying to make sure that we stayed aware of data, that we stayed aware of connecting central office work, faces the buildings that connects to building principles that connects to teachers and connects to students. So we looked at this document again as a group of six folks. Tony and I working on the budgeting priority, Carla and Janice working on the configuration and vision priority and Mike McAllister and Chantel Washington working on the equity. This document, updated version was provided to you. I think you may have gotten got received it later than we thought. We thought it went out Friday, but it didn't go out Friday. It went out today, so we apologize. We sent out what we were going to use tonight for our display of how we're going to organize the work, which is a condensed set of slides for tonight's presentation. And I think what we would like to do is walk through these slides and give an overview. If there are any questions from the school committee, please feel free to ask in the feedback. We are using this as a work plan for the district. This is not a strategic plan. This is a work plan. We know we have operationalized needs that we need to take care of. We have to open the building in 2023 with the schedule, with staffing ready on hand, with transportation in place and working on our portrait of a graduate work as part of that vision process connected to moving into the new school in the in the future strategic work. We committed time and resources to our equity work last year in in the form of a new position, which is Chantel's director in the the audit by MIT. We want to now follow through on that work as well. So these are pieces of our work that we want to set a plan for, let you know what we're looking to do, what our timelines are. So that's essentially, this is a more of a district map in work plan than it is a strategic plan. So for the viewers at home, we'll put up a couple of slides and we'll try to balance our conversation between the slides that our people, our folks in the crowd here can see in person and see on the screen. And we will ask the school committee to also keep in mind the document that we have that's also online from our last meeting, I believe, if folks wanted to go online and look at the document that's entitled Belmont Schools 2022, 2023 Priorities. So we do mention our mission statement in this. So the first slide for central office is the context of our priorities. For the purposes of tonight, we want to make sure people are aware of where we are in this moment in time in the Belmont Public Schools, the work that we've been moving through prior to COVID in relation to reconfiguring our district, having COVID interrupt that process and now condensing that work into this year in in preparation for opening the school in 2023. We also know that our vision of teaching and learning work was being conducted with work that Janice Diaries did with a group of educators that was getting ready to go to our community as well. And we are going to move that work into our portrait of a graduate work for our students and community to be able to weigh in on in our staff as well. And as always in Belmont, the the annual challenge of budget and funding the district in an adequate way each year, especially when we are expanding our footprint to a new school, which we are in fiscal '24, will be a substantial challenge. So those are the three areas that we're walking our way through. That's the context of the school year that we see now. And the first priority that we would like to talk about would be our budget. In this topic, which was a which I wish was our last one to talk about because it's been an evolving conversation over the course of the last six weeks. But if you can go to the next slide, the main areas that we're going to go through. Tony, if you want to carry us through the slide.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Do we want to go to the next slide?
Yes.
So as is included in the budget priorities document that was provided to the school committee at a private meeting, from the major budget categories, we'll be looking at our staffing. I'll pause at each one at staffing that basically at this time, the prevailing guidance this time was subject to change potentially, is looking to develop a level service budget of sorts to determine what level of service we'll need to provide for our students next year. Maybe pluses and minuses either way to sort of get there. But in a nutshell, that's what we're looking at with staffing. Of course, this will be all packed much more in the coming weeks and months. The next sort of major section of the budget is special education, district tuitions, transportation and contract services. I think folks know that that's a complex cost center funded from a number of different sources. And we'll look to optimize the utilization of those funding sources to pay for all of our mitigated costs and to support the overall budget in general. The next part of that will be revolving fees. That's particularly in the context of the opening of the new building and what rental fees may be for the use of that building. I think earlier tonight, we talked about a general item that really underscored the importance of looking at the fees as we go into next year's budget cycle. The next several items for text materials and supplies, technology, software and hardware and professional development, we'll look to sort of rightsize those costs are, what our needs are as part of a level service budget to provide the services needed for our students next year. And the the last bullet there is that we have been and will continue to collaborate with our town partners related to FY24 budget calendar and process, along with our target for at this time is a level service budget for next year.
So Tony, thank you. I just want to add two things to that. One is for the viewers at home, if you haven't accessed the document online, for each one of the priorities that you see on the screen, there are action steps, targeted dates for completion, and also outputs that we would have for each one of those as part of our planning process and reporting our process to the school committee and to the community in relation to our collaboration with town partners for FY24 and also to the model of how we're going to approach our budget. There has been some discussion at the town level of what what is the goal of of our budgeting process for this year? Is it? Is it a level funded budget? Is it a level service budget that we're looking to provide? Is it a student driven zero based budget? And after much dialogue, we we are understanding after a meeting that we had today that our our focus should be to provide the the town and the school committee and the community with a level service budget that meets the needs of students next year, which means that we have to take a look at our current general fund budget and what are the the needs that are represented in that and our staff for that work. Are there any positions in the federally funded positions that we are currently taking advantage of last year and this year that need to move forward? Because that would be level service for some parts of our community and students and staff. And then lastly, this conversation about the audit district and how we can organize ourselves with the Warren Committee in the town to ensure that we have enough money to support our three year audit district. So we are looking to provide what that would look like for next year for our students and our staff and our programming. The other, the other items in that list, text material supplies, technology, will again, to Tony's point, be indexed at a rate that we feel will support the work of moving into into a new school, being able to have now seven distinct schools within the district. The biggest piece of our ad for next year that we have to be mindful of is that for the last five years, we've been talking about September of 23, opening a new school, that just from an organizational structure, that we will move the current folks that we have that serve students in grade seven and eight to the middle school, I mean, to the middle school, high school on Carncott Ave. We will keep our five and six staff present at the current channery site, which will be the new channery upper elementary school. But there are incremental FTEs that will need to be added to the district in order to create that organizational seventh school. And so this is should not be new to the community. We've been talking about it for many years. I talked to a member of the Warren Committee today. Who knows this plan inside and out because he's been on the Warren Committee for a while. But this may come to a surprise that we we haven't been able to incrementally staff to that end over the last few years because we've had budget challenges. So we are going to see a a list of positions needed to open the building next year that will be part of what will be considered level service because we're going to service the students across the seven schools. Our enrollment will be part of this discussion. We have increased enrollment in EL. We we looked through those charts last spring. When we looked at this year's budget, we were letting the public know that we had an increase in EL students, that we may need more support this year. We also have an increase in the subgroup of our special education students. Students who have specialized needs are also growing at a higher clip than our general population. And our population shift from elementary to middle and high school continues. So putting the resources where the children are is part of what we will look at as well. So the the three major points in in what areas to our general fund allocation, rolling that over with all the contractual locations for increase in salary steps and lanes, the federal funding positions that we feel may be needed, maybe all of them, maybe some of them. And then adding whatever incremental needs to be put in place for our our opening of the middle school that will be housed and can't get out. Those are all the major pathways that need to be really unpacked and discussed in order to determine what, I think the term today was a moderate level service budget, not not aspirational and not a C minus, but something that represents what we need to put in place for students to support them next year. And so that that seemed to be the direction that we put today in the meeting that both Meg and I attended. When it relates to the work that we're presenting tonight, it really relates to the beginning of that list of programming, staffing, and how we want to move that forward. I think the other areas of the budget will be indexed to make sure we can support the new configuration, but they will not be as drastic in percent increase as the potential staffing may be. So that's the budget. We may have or need time to have a whole budget conversation. We've met with Jamal in our attempt to start to meet on the budget moving forward. We may want to have an extra meeting in October just to talk about budget because there's timeliness of this work that we want to make sure we're updating folks on. And as Tony pointed out, we will continue to work with the town in their budget calendar, which means that there will be a discussion about revenue for September and October and December. And expenses really will not be discussed until sometime in January. But that means the work of of what we need to do for expenses needs to happen now. And we need to be able to make that very clear to folks as to what the needs are, what level service looks like and begin to discuss when we're ready to do so with the town, what that potential discrepancy could be between what the revenue available is and what the what the hopes and expectations for a level service budget are for the Belmont Public Schools. The next priority area that we are going to go over is priority number two, which is diversity, equity and inclusion. And Chantel will be presenting on that along with Mike McAllister.
Thanks, John. Yes, so the priorities that we have this year came from the equity audit. And overall, we just want to give a And overall, we just want to give a reminder that all of this work is to improve the learning and outcomes for our students. And so we took in the feedback that we received in August. And I'll just give a general overview and then let you know how we incorporated some of that feedback. So our first area is really going to be on like hiring. That came across as very important during the audit process and also during the process after the audit. Where we went back into the community and spoke a little bit more and had some educators come together to review the data from the equity audit. And that rose to the top as really, really important. We want to utilize the district school based teams and the district team, district wide team. To really dig deeper into the equity goals at each school. We started this structure back in twenty 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 twenty. And now we want to make it. Now we want to make it a little bit more intentional. And so we're going to utilize the teams and the folks who are in the buildings and eager to really do this work. To dig deeper and create some goals and some movements at the school level. So as part of that, I'll be working really closely with each school, each team. I'll work individually with principals to help, you know, coach them along. Thinking about their goals and just really being a thought partner with them in developing this structure for their school and their staff. Ongoing professional development also rose to the top. That was in many recommendation points that was left in the audit for the recommendations that they gave us. That we really needed to focus on making sure that I educate, not only our educators, but our community that folks are getting. Educated on anti racist education essentially. And so we wanted to think about starting that structure. How do we really set up some ongoing learning, reoccurring? Like consistent opportunities for folks to be able to learn together as a community, as leaders. To practice and to put this work into process and to practice. So we are really focusing this year intentionally on our leaders in the district. And they will be going through some extensive programming with some outside auditors. But we've already started this work this year with our. Opening day professional development where we were able to talk about our goals and. Things that we wanted educators to focus on this year with the entire staff. So that was a really great opportunity. We got some really great feedback from that. Professional learning experience as well, so. Oh, so yes, so with the revised plan, one of the comments that we received last time was about. Having it be more student focused and we really thought about that, like, how can we incorporate students a little bit more? And since this is very much catered toward our workforce. We thought that definitely just figuring out ways to bring in more student voices. In terms of hiring, I know students are often a part of hiring committees and get to have a part, say so in that. But as we're developing new questions and processes for inclusive hiring. We want to be able to, when we can, obviously, run our ideas and our thoughts and our strategies by students. So we can get their input as well. And so the newly hired retention team. The D E I hiring and retention team that we will launch this year. Will try to bring in those student voices as well. We will consult with our. Oh, yes, we'll do training as well to do more about. Help our staff to understand in our inclusive hiring practices and best practices. And so as a part of that process, all of it, we want to make sure that we're bringing in our student students' voices. We will have more specialized engagement with our student affinity groups and our staff affinity group. But in particular with our student affinity groups, as I meet with principals and school leaders. This is going to be a constant part of the conversation. How are these affinity groups doing? What kind of support do the advisors need to support the students in those groups? Because many of them focus on supporting minoritized students. We will have more instances where we include students alongside adults, which I talked about a little bit. We will do a little bit more promotion of the bias incident tool and continue to develop that protocol over time. We're looking at another good feedback we received last time was about focusing. On, I'm thinking, oh, the assessment in terms of. You know, looking at how we are going to assess this, we will have like some some kind of like traditional. Measures that we already have in place, achievement measures that we'll look at as a district overall. For a lot of this work, but also student surveys will also be a part of the process. And then we're just going to be cautious. Thanks, Meg. Last time you mentioned being cautious about not taking on too much in one ear. Which is really was a really great comment to give us. But we're just going to try to strike the balance. And obviously, this is not going to be the only work that, you know, I do. This is much generated for me, but. I'm still going to be able to work with students and educators as, you know, different things come up. So.
So Chantel, in terms of professional development, we had a great session with our educators, school committee and administration in June. And we also have, obviously, the the P D session you mentioned that was district wide. And then this week, we have one with our leadership council. That will be the focus of this year's work with our leadership council as well. So at different levels of the district, the professional development is happening. All of which is to support the adults in this work to in turn support students in this work as well and the families. So thank you very much. The reconfiguration transition work that we're putting forward and just to go backwards. The diversity equity goals have areas of focus. They have action steps. They have target for completion and output. References in our larger document as well. And I'd like to ask Carla Costa to to update the school committee on the reconfiguration transition goal for this year as well.
Thank you. So I'll just walk through the slide here. The first thing we will be tackling immediately is the seven, eight school. And how that reconfiguration is going to work. So first and foremost is really thinking about how to communicate what's happening and take input and feedback from all stakeholders. So that's a primary step that I'm taking right now, building a website, putting together some some teams to talk with me. And give me information and ten minutes of exchange. We need to finalize the seven to twelve schedule. We need to staff the new seven and eight building. We need to then in the spring kind of move in the direction of thinking more about the grades four to six reconfiguration. And and that's really an exciting opportunity for the district and families in the district to create a vision for this new upper elementary school. And really, I think that I've heard this phrase multiple times. I think it's really a goal that we have is to keep our kids young. And this is an opportunity in this school, the four to six school to do that. And it'll be a wonderful opportunity over the next eight months to eighteen months to get ready. For when that school becomes a four, five, six and build it together. So that's an exciting opportunity. The next bullet is the successful opening of the seven and eight building, and that's really the technical work around. Being a building liaison for the building itself to put together the logistics and the execution of a move, which we have learned in. With the high school that it's it's very complex. And so that's coming up shortly. And also partner with the director of technology and food services to get those programs up and running and ready for open in the fall. Next bullet is the vision for teaching and learning and portrait of a graduate. You may or may not be aware that Janice Darius stakeholders, including. Families and community members worked on a vision for teaching and learning that was connected to the building project. Couple of years ago, and that effort was put on hold with the pandemic. And now we are restarting that work conjunction with a N E S visit to the high school. And one of the elements that they are asking for is a portrait of a graduate. Which is really creating that vision and taking the vision that started the vision work that started a couple of years ago. And moving in a direction to meet the N E S requirement. Some high schools do that at just the high school level. We've decided as a district to look at a vision from K to twelve. And that's going to be very exciting work to do with, again, our educators and our community members and families to think about. Ultimately, what we want all students to be able to to know and do and the skills we want them to have. And so that'll be a great discussion to continue. And the last area of the bucket of work that I am working on is curriculum mapping with all of the educators in seven to twelve. We, as part of a N E S requirement, they're looking for curriculum that is aligned horizontally and vertically. And we are going to, that's been in place, and now we we have an opportunity to put it into an actual online mapping system. And that will help us to really understand how our curriculum is articulated. And also to look at, we can do different types of work with that mapping system to understand what we're teaching and when. At what school, at what level of in grade. So that's an exciting opportunity that we are doing with our seven to twelve. Our directors are currently putting together the rollout, which will happen next week for the high school. And then the middle school seven and eight will join us in that work in the spring.
Thank you, Carla. And I think when we when we talk about the successful opening of the seventh and eighth grade wing of the new seven to twelve middle high school. Moving the high school from one building to the other involved the physical move. But it was a much more simple move of everybody that was in that old school went over to that new school. What we're what we anticipated and what we're, you know, moving through in a very condensed manner right now is. We have roughly half the staff of the current January Middle School, the seventh and eighth grade side of that, moving in. And then five and six teachers remaining to be a part of the future four to six upper elementary. But we have people in the middle. We have folks that serve all students. And so how we are going to go about making sure that we have enough staffing, how we staff that work. Who goes to the to the seventh and eighth grade, who stays in four, five, six? In the complexities of if someone has to travel back and forth or not. Do we need to supplement that with any F T E components to make sure that we have a solid staffing solution for seven and eight? And also maybe connect that seven through twelve. So the complexity of this challenge is considerably more intense than what we face when we move from. One building of nine to twelve educators to another building with the same nine to twelve educators. So that work is something that we've already engaged in, related to schedule. And now we're going to start to work at that with staffing in F T E licensure. All that work was actually outlined at the beginning of the work that we talked about with smaller committees. That would have happened over time and now they'll have to happen in a condensed way. And that's work that we have to do with our staff. Carla has already, I think, met with from the middle school. I think they had a tour today. Tomorrow's the tour for some of our staff who want to go see the school. But we'll have to get into deeper conversations about how that work takes place and what's the structure and the process for that. So we meet with our educators, we're able to do so in a way that makes sense to them, that we listen. And that we move forward in a way that people feel involved. And we start the school year off with what we need in place for students. In our new configuration in September of twenty three.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone. And certainly in the the meeting that we were in this afternoon, talking about budget. When the idea of opening the new seven, eight school came up, there was some a pause where everybody from what was like, oh, yeah, this is this is what we've been working toward. This is going to be great. So it should be a happy moment. I know there's a lot of work behind it and a lot of discussion to be had. But I, you know, it'll be a great thing too for the town, so. So that I will take comments and questions from the school committee. And I I think that it would be great if you could maybe direct your question or or say to whom you're asking the question. Seeing as there are so many people here who could answer our questions. Jamal?
But do you want the questions to be targeted at one one priority at a time or just shoot?
I didn't have a preference. I was just going to say, I think we could shoot if that's okay, but and and just like, you know, say who who or what priority you're you're talking about. Jamal?
Doing great.
Just want to give you a little positive.
We could all guess, like, try to guess what you're going to actually ask the question about. I bet I know.
So there's a new label for. Moderate level service. So just want to make sure that we we all hear and understand what this means. I think, you know, it's moved quite a bit. So am I?
And I I can I just add briefly that the Warren Committee has also stated that they will make a a very clear statement after they meet next week about. You know, what they exactly mean by by that, so that everybody's on the on the same page. I just want to, we, you know, we had a small meeting.
So so this is driven by the warrant committee, not by the select board?
No, this was a this was a group meeting. I'm just saying so that we're all on the same page. I I just. Sorry for interrupting. I just don't want us to. I don't know that I have the, you know, the definition for moderate or what it is that you're.
Okay, because I, you know, it sounded like it was a brand new branded term. I want to understand what the brand is. Because, you know, I know that the superintendent really wants to know where the bullseye is. And if the bullseye is moderate level, that we're actually giving the district clarity of what that what that is. And because if the if the moderate level service is not what we think of as the current services that exist. Rolling them over, right? Then we're going to have to go through a process of tiering and prioritizing, which is another layer layer of work that needs to happen. So when will we know? If that's the case, when will we know? Because that's really what the the shape of the goal and the shape of the work that is happening. Between now and the next few months.
So I I think that we're we're all agreeing when we meet, and I think this is. There was some confusion at the end of the budget summit the other night, but I think that what we're, what the town is saying is that we have a revenue challenge. And it doesn't match up with our expenses in the town. And then if we want to move forward responsibly, we have to moderate our asks in each department as we move forward. So moderating a level service means that we don't want to take any services away from what we're offering now. And we don't want to add things that we might not be able to afford, because moving forward, we have a deficit. And and even when we talk about. What a moderate level service budget will look like, when we add to it the fact that we we added some services that we never had before. That most districts had in place for their children for a long time, i.e. math coaches, social workers. Certain types of U N D positions that supported students that we added due to the need of academic recovery and mental health recovery during COVID. That's something that's been in place for in other districts for us. So we know that when we made those additions, that that might be something that might have to go away. But if we're asking for level service for what kids need for basic services, that may be part of it. It may be. We need to keep some social workers in place. So level service means what a kid's need in a moderate way to be able to have our students. Be sufficiently challenged academically and also supported. And the the elephant in the room is this new school. So we could probably in a normal year get by with what we have and adding a little more like we did last year into this year. But when we add to it the fact that we are going to have to add F T Es and partial F T Es to create a new school, despite the fact that we can. Divide our current staff and move them into two different buildings, it is a whole new structure. So that's one piece that may create the offset, the 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 challenge that we're going to have for budgeting for next year. So we are trying to narrow down the bullseye. We are trying to get clarity on what kind of budget that we we feel we can move forward. That may be more than we the town can afford, but represents the needs. That students have in a in a responsible way, not aspirational, but realistic. But not discounting the fact that there are needs that students have that schools are obligated to provide. So there's there's going to be a healthy tension between what we put forward and what we can afford. And we're acknowledging that. We know that we have a structural deficit. We've had one every year in the nine years that I've been here. So we we're we're preparing to demonstrate what we need in a responsible way. Identify what that gap may be with whatever revenue projections we have at that time, because that's the first part of the work. And then I, to your point, we're going to have some, we potentially might have to make decisions either to add revenue. I e free cash or other parts of our money that's available. Or not provide the level service that we believe students need in the community.
And I'm sure we'll have more time in subsequent meetings to talk through that, but I just wanted to clarify the term. I ask my next questions or?
Yes, you can ask another question, Jamal, and then I'll go to somebody else. Yes, you can ask another question, Jamal, and then I'll go to somebody else.
So I'll, I'll pick up on the, on the other point, which is the seven to eighth, you know, and the reconfiguration. So this is the reconfigure, I guess, when I first imagined what the reconfiguration, reconfiguration transition mean, it was not just seven to eight, it was for fourth grade and everything, right? So this is such a critical, critical part of the puzzle. What wasn't clear to me, at what point do you envision the touchpoints will be coming back to the, to the school committee so that we know how the progress is going? Because there is frankly an option here that nobody wants to have, which is a delay of a transition if you don't believe the transition is going to be done well and serve, as, you know, and serve the, serve the, not just the community, but also within the budget that we're talking about. So it's, as you think about the outcomes here, it all were really, you know, long-term without any intermediate touchpoints. So can you, can you define that maybe a little bit more clearly so that we can say in December we can come with?
Yeah. So if you look at the document, just for kind of a first pass, the target dates for completion can help us kind of get a sense of our hopeful target dates, right? My touchpoints with the school committee will be on a pretty regular basis. I'm gonna say monthly, if not every other month, but I, but I believe I'm on the schedule, John. I don't know if you have it with you in October. And I anticipate talking to this group a lot to make sure that you're aware. And also lots of communication to educators, lots of communication to all stakeholders, frankly, so they're aware of what's happening. I'm working on a website. I think it'll be done by Friday, and we'll be taking some input from families as well and then shifting. We'll be working real hard on this seven, eight, you know, to make sure that we are opening very well. We are opening, you know, in the fall. We want to open well. And then we're gonna shift into, I'll shift a little bit more into the four to six in the spring, working with Nikla Fonda to start to build thinking around that school. But it's, it's all kind of happening at the same time. It's just really the areas of focus right now because of that opening in, in the fall is seven, eight.
Yeah. Can I add to that? Because I, I just want to restate so we said, we're receiving more questions and concerns, some of which were tonight, about what does the public's gonna look like? And we understand that, that our fourth grade teachers have been asking that question since two thousand and eighteen. They were the first ones that come to the table. Operationally, we have to open this new building. We have to have a schedule. We have to have buses that show up. We have to have staffing for it. We have to organize the school, and it has to happen. The operational logistic, logistical challenges that are substantial. So that has to happen first. That has to be part of what we do first. I would say that the, the, the second part of the, the, the beginning of the planning for the four to six school will be in more of the second half of this year, and then we have a whole other year to move through that. So all those decisions for what we want the school, the six upper elementary to look like, should be determined by at least December of next school year. That gives everybody lead time of the spring, January through June, to understand where they're going as a staff member, what families feel is, is the the teaching model, how we're gonna approach teaching and learning for grade four, grade five students and grade six students. But we, we would, we want about a year to do that work, but it's gonna be dovetail with our seventh and eighth grade work for this, in this academic year. But it'll be its sole work of the district to get ready for that in the following year. That's where they connect.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think I just have a few comments. Want to express appreciation that we have staff who are probably not a hundred percent dedicated, but very focused on like each of these priorities. So I just feel grateful for, for the leadership at this table. First of all, I, I think it would be hard to disagree with these as priorities or personally, right? They're, they're really important, recognizing there's a lot of other priorities as well. But there's also a lot that falls within these things that is much bigger than it might sound from like budget or reconfiguration, right? It did just occur to me that we should just be careful about, in my opinion, thinking about four to six budgetary needs, anything that would be needed well in advance, that we would just want to make sure we're thinking about over the course of this year, especially if we think, we're thinking about anything structural. I have no idea exactly what, what will be needed. And, yeah, I think really at the checkpoint with the school committee and hearing about how things are going and what the outcomes are in a, you know, honest way where we can hopefully have supportive and also, you know, sort of healthy conversations as the year goes on. Sounds like the right way to go in each of these areas. And budget, I think, is going to be more intense than usual from what I understand over the next few months. So also figuring out how to bring families in as appropriate. I mean, in all of these areas, but particularly with a new timeline, since not everybody's watching these meetings.
Can I just get the clarification of what Amy said? Also, short. I was sure if I understood your, your guidance or your caution about working up the budgetary impact on four to six, you're saying don't or do?
Yeah, just, I don't know if there's anything, any budgetary needs that we should at least consider, if not need to, you know, fund in some way over a year in advance to get the school ready. I, I, I don't know. I'm just aware that it's a building that's been, and, you know, a, a physical outdoor space that's been used for a different age of kids and that will, and, you know, have a different structure within the building in terms of staffing. So I, it would just be, it sounds like we'll start to think about that the second part of this year, but if, if you're already aware of something we should be thinking about, even if it's not within the school budget, but it's within the town budget, let's talk about that too.
Thanks, Meg. I have three questions, and there may be some comments and commentary embedded in the questions, but I won't ask them all in a row if other people have questions. You can just kind of share the mic. I'll do the one that I think is the most important, which is what is not present in this version of the priorities document. I only scanned the revised Google Doc, which I really appreciate. I could, I can see that feedback even quickly scanning was integrated. And Chantal, I appreciate you talking in specific terms about how it mattered to you and the work that you are leading. But I, I would say that we have to, as a community, say that one of the priorities of the Belmont Public Schools is tracking and supporting vulnerable students that have already been identified. We can't just get into project management mode and have a document out in the public view that says these are our priorities. And I don't see those students reflected adequately in, in the documents that I've seen so far. And I raised this point before. And I, I feel so strongly about this point because, for one, there's an ethical responsibility, obviously, that we all share to make sure that, that we know about what's going on with those students, and we're making as our best efforts to address their needs. There are also budgetary implications, right? So if all you ever cared about or thought about, if you never thought about kids, but if all you thought about is making the case for budget, and Superintendent Phelan and I, you have had this, a version of this conversation many times. We have to be able to understand it and communicate the need, not in abstract terms, but in concrete terms, and, and equate that to dollars in a way that folks who are not paying close attention can understand. But apart from that, we just have an ethical obligation. And I think as a school committee, we have a statutory responsibility. I know how those students are doing. We've identified them, and we have to know. And so I, I can't see a way that we could name a document, a priority based document and not call that out explicitly, either as its own category or embedded throughout the document. So that's point one. Point two is I've given this feedback privately, and Meg, thank you for encouraging me to bring it to the big table, because I'm gonna do that now. I, this is really to Ms. Coz, and perhaps to Superintendent Phelan as well. I don't see in the documents that we've been shared so far a place where authentic family engagement and community engagement is gonna happen earlier in the school year, vis a vis, not, not vis a vis the portrait of the graduate, which I understand is gonna be happening later anyhow, but in the fall. And so my question really is to my fellow committee members first, is whether you share that priority. If you're hearing that from community members, Superintendent Phelan mentioned he's getting a lot of questions. Are, are we feeling like that's a priority? And if we do, will the district administration commit to having some fall meetings with families to hear their concerns, to hear their questions, and not link our idea of family and community engagement solely with the portrait of the graduate work, which is very high concept, very downstream, not top of mind for most parents. So that's two. And the third is to Chantal, and it might be to you, Mike, as well. Mike has left the room, I guess, so I'll ask it all of you, Chantal. I appreciated the, the edits that went into the, that section of the priorities document. I'm curious about, and if you haven't thought about this much, we can talk about it at a later time, how the equity team's goals link up with the school site council's goals for the school, and like, what's the interplay between those two bodies? Because I, I, I think we haven't had a very robust school council process recently, and there are lots of reasons why that could be so, but this is a good opportunity, I think, to have folks collaborate so we don't have goals kind of in silos. We have integrated goals at the school level. So those are my three main points, and I'll be happy to take your answers.
Could I answer the last one first? We, at our principals' meeting last week, and at principals' meetings leading into the school year, every principal will hold school site council meetings as called for by policy and law. They will post those meetings. They will take minutes of those meetings. And the school goals that they have will be discussed at those school site council meetings. It is our expectation that school, that our district goals related to equity into our configuration, but most importantly related to equity, are embedded into the school's goals that will be looked at and discussed at the school site council will be in a principal's set of goals for the year. And we've also had work done with our leadership council where some of our educators are putting those types of goals into their own objectives and goals for the evaluation process for the year. So I'm, I'm trying to connect those dots, Jeff, to show that systematically we're addressing this in a, in a little bit of a different way at each level of the district to impact students in the, in the right way, right? To support staff and also to, to impact students. At the central office level, that's a little bit of a couple of dots in between the student. But it goes from superintendent's, the, the work plan that we're discussing tonight, to my goals, to the goals of the folks in this room who are at the cabinet level, to the school-based expectations for their student, their school improvement plans, the principal's goals. In our building-based groups, as outlined by, by Chantal, that has been a system in place prior to this year for, for several years, is, is to customize what this work means in that school at this time with those staff and giving some authentic grassroots permission for folks to do what they believe is best for their children and their school with their staff related to diversity and equity when it comes to certain parts of what we're doing. So we don't want to tell anybody what to do. We want to be able to say that this work is important. Here's the focus areas of the district. Your school is coming up with some goals as well. And then your district-level DEI team will be part of that work in the building. So it might look very different at the Butler than it does at the Wellington, than it does at the high school. But it, it will be something that they'll be doing together for their school and their students that will be reported up into their school improvement plan, that will come together to discuss with the district-wide equity team. And that's where we learn from each other. That's where the modeling happens. That's where the sharing happens. And that's where next year's goals will start to emerge, the work that we learned from this year. So those are all the kind of how we connected the dots. And that's how we'll do it this year. And it's, it's a model that we've used with SEL. It's a model that we think still gives professionals in the building the autonomy to kind of make decisions and do some of that work and report up on how it's working and how it impacts students.
So I appreciate that. Is in an implication of that, that the equity teams will work very closely with the school site councils? And even to the degree that when that discussion happens at the site council about the school's goals, the equity teams might be present? Is that, is that a fair assumption about how things might proceed, or had you not thought that far in advance, which is fine, but?
I, I would, I would not micromanage that process for our principals and our local groups. But that's something they want to get together on. That's great. I know that, that, that type of interaction has happened with our PTO groups that now do have DEI groups within PTOs, where they have met with the building-based group. So there's a lot of folks looking to get into the work and how we want to work it. So that there, there are connections that could be made, that could be supportive of the, the plan, the building work, the building-based work, the staff work, et cetera, in the PTOs for that matter.
Okay.
Jamal?
I was just gonna respond to the question that, that's okay.
That's fine. I was actually gonna ask Jeff if he could reiterate his question, and, and then we could respond. Jeff, could you reiterate the question and your second point?
I think I have it.
You bet. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Wait for a second. The connection's breaking. So I, my question, the, the observation I made about that, that was put in the form of a question for the school committee was that I believe that we need to have more authentic opportunities for families to engage on the, the reconfiguration work ahead of, and in addition, curious if other school committee members feel the same way, and if they do, if district leadership will commit to those kinds of interactions, which don't seem right present in the plan.
Thanks, Jeff. Maybe I will get some responses if, if there are school committee members who would like to offer those, and then I will come back to the district. Jamal?
So, thank you, Meg. So I guess, as a general principal, there's, who, who wouldn't want to have a proper, authentic family engagement? I think it depends on the goal, what you want to get out of that, if it is to inform some of the choices that are happening in, within the reconfiguration and/or, or what specific choices that are happening. And because there's a lot of ambiguity, a lot of things are being worked up, and I'm, I don't have that clarity to say whether this is, needs to happen last year, today, or, or, or in, in, in January. So in, in principle, I agree with that, Jeff. I just think it's, there are so many questions. I am not sure what an authentic family engagement would look like. And so I, I think it's a worthwhile question to ask and to get feedback from the rest of the, the group here.
So I think Carla has an answer to that question.
Do, yeah. So to your point that today, the immediate, you know, and then the long term with the four to six. So in talking with some community members and families and educators, there's a lot that we need to do and will do. So as I mentioned, our website is kind of an outward-facing model to help folks understand various aspects of the technical pieces around the move, right? And when things are happening and how. We will be doing parent coffees and parent evenings to be able to give parents an opportunity, families an opportunity to ask questions and get those questions answered. I'm also gonna be sending out a Google form to all families to start to gather some of the questions and concerns they may have and answer those on a rolling basis through the website, through an FAQ form. And there'll be PTO connects, obviously connecting with those folks and through principal coffees to be able to be a guest star and talk to them and hear some feedback and also give some information. And of course, the school committee reporting, I'll be doing one on a regular basis. So those are some of the ideas that, that I am working on and implementing. We met today with our seven, eight educator advisory team. So there's a group of about twelve educators that teach grade seven and eight, who are starting to kind of provide input and will help, help think through some of the technical aspects of the move. And then as we shift to the four to six, then we have a real opportunity to bring more parents and community members into the conversation around what that model is going to look like. We have a little time to do that work. So that will be in, in connection with Nikla Fonda, and she'll lead that work with, along with my support, to really start to build that vision. Go ahead, John.
So, so I think that this goes back to the question, Jeff, that Jamal asked, which is the purpose of the meetings in the fall with community engagement may be to re, re-engage with what's going on, how this is working, what the update is, because people, all of us have had this kind of two-year gray period of COVID where we haven't been thinking down that far. And so updating, communicating, answering questions, and making sure that everybody's aware of what's happening. And so updating, communicating, answering questions and making sure that everybody's aware of what's happening timelines and what it will look like. Because the seventh and eighth grade part is kind of done in terms of. How the teaching and learning will happen at the middle school side of the building that was done when we built the building. The the real discussion that parents think can then engage in. That will be eventually part of our portion of a graduate, but specific to our four to sixes. How do we want to engage four to six learners? What is that going to look like for? The this this new upper elementary school? How do we want to organize that? And that's going to be. A probably more brainstorming. How does that look for you as an educator? How does that look for you as a family member? Whether or not we get students involved at some point in time. That's where there'll be a probably that kind of a session for that work. That that's very different from the seventh and eighth grade work, because really it's it's. It's re reintroducing, we're moving in a year for the seventh and eighth grade folks. And we've already done a lot of that. That work about what the school should look like and why it should look that way and what it does for. A middle school model and for students. So that's how I see it. So fall is about communicating and bringing folks up to date and being accessible. And then spring and next year would be more about discussion. Brainstorming and coming to agreement of what we want that four to six school to look like with all the stakeholders involved.
Jeff, thank you for asking the question and the responses and Amy.
So it sounds like the website accomplishes, I think, just a reflection from thinking about. Family engagement a lot over. Many challenging, right, months is, you know. I think if. To the extent that it can be clear about sort of what the timeline is, when the period of time is. Generally, what will be happening, you know, what kinds of opportunities and when. And also if if folks have, you know, as you said, like particular concerns right now, it's like, it sounds like there's a mechanism. And that, but I think often. It's really helpful for. Again, it's both like an understanding of what the process will be and also when. That will happen and some of the rationale behind it is really helpful versus, you know, right now, I think we're all sitting in like a new. Place with a new plan and a lot of uncertainty. And obviously, I mean, I I do think we're all concerned about. Family engagement, all of us, right? And and two way. You know, real conversations where it's not too late to to weigh in on things that we're asking about or that families want to weigh in on.
So.
And I think just like keeping in mind, which may not be part of your scope, right? But just there's really basic information. Sort of on every. Parents' minds who's aware of this or even parents who may not be aware. I'll say as a parent of a seventh grader. I'm not sure everybody's aware of what will be happening to students next next year and and what that experience will be like this. Year in a school where, you know, there's certain routines and celebrations and such, and that again, maybe out of scope and more for the the principal.
But just really, again, either as part of the website or as part of principal communications with current families, just.
Reminding people about the basics, because I just think it's, we wouldn't want. Folks to be surprised, even though everybody probably does see that building being built, but it is confusing. And similarly, right for elementary school parents as well. So.
So Amy, your comments remind me that. When we talk about communicating and bringing folks up to date with the seven through twelve piece of it, because it's the immediacy of the work. Does not mean that we shouldn't have a coffee hour for our four to six folks. Because if they have something that they need to ask or or need clarification on. We don't want them to wait until the spring, right? We don't have to wait till then. We can say. This is what we're doing now. This is why we're doing it. What are your questions about four to six? This is what we hope to learn through our work together over the next eighteen months. That will inform what that school looks like in September of twenty four. So we don't really have to make folks wait. We can, we can engage that group while we're engaging. Our seven to twelve folks or seven to eight folks. It it's not, it's not one or the other, right? It's probably both at the same time and maybe even targeting some of that. So people feel comfortable that they can ask some elementary based questions for what's going to happen and what the timeline. This, this is a condensed version of what the original timeline was.
I'm hearing a lot of appreciation for all the work and agreement with the three priorities. I'm also hearing a lot of us wanting, you know, timelines and touch points. And so it sounds like. Different people have different things to work on when it comes to that. And certainly. The touch points in the. You know, in in terms of that budget process as well as as when people are coming. Back to the school committee, I think is something that we can work on in terms of the content calendar and ourselves touching bases with. The people who are in charge of the district priorities and then being able to provide that maybe to to the school committee in the next few weeks, so that they can also see where those touch points are. And when things are coming back to us. I'm also hearing there's. We might need to look and add a meeting around just budget.
So so my, so to Meg's point, we have a content counter that we have every single meeting for the whole year on it. And we start to put the ideas in over the course of the year. So now that the cabinet knows that this is our direction. We will now start to populate this document with where we think we need to. Be in front of the school committee, and that may mean adding meetings. I do suggest that. The priority of budget in any movement in that discussion will have should happen with the finance subcommittee. Because that's the organized group that that interfaces with Tony and I. That that Mike and Chantel can meet with the equity subcommittee to provide a vehicle for the school committee, and then they can inform and we can. Try to use the content calendar to make sure that we're meeting and talking and presenting on on the issues in the timeline. And the configuration just doesn't fit into one of those yet, right? So we should be thoughtful about that just might be at this table all the time. Do you mean? The configuration has many. You know, branches that connect to budget and that connect to other things as well. So it's going to have to be in front of everybody like budget is going to have to be in front of everybody as well. So.
John, just for the minutes, I just did want to restate, we don't have a finance subcommittee, but we do have two liaisons or a liaison. I just want to make sure that for the minutes. Chantal?
Yeah, I did want to go back to Jeff's other question because I didn't want to leave it hanging there. I just wanted to say. I think I agree with you if I remember how you phrased it. I I agree probably a lot, like a hundred and ten percent. And.
About which point, sorry.
Do you want to say it again?
Vulnerable student populations and and making sure we are making that a clear priority, that we do not lose sight of them and. In the midst of all the other things that are important.
Yeah, and I, it's, it's, it's hap, it's happening. So in some ways, the data, like even the data that Carla is collecting, it will be. A lot of the work that's being done like. With our outside consultants, from Leslie.
M T S S.
M T S S will help to uncover. Some of those populations even, right? And so I think. The the reason why I have this work set up this way is because from my experience. We have excellent people already, right? Like in place, we have excellent educators. I'm really looking forward to our leadership team. They're strong. However, we still need to develop. Kind of collectively, a lens that is missing, right? And so we can't, I want to jump into that like automatically and skip all the steps like. Okay, here's a program, here's a program, here's a program. But that's like several people that I would have to jump ahead to make that work. And so. If that makes sense. So we have to go through the process and part of the process is developing the critical consciousness. Consciousness that we need to to really identify so that it's not me like all like point like. You know, that it's not everybody seeing it together, right? And that's also why a part of this work. Is set up this way for me to be one on one is because it's personal, right? And so. You have to think about the different dynamics that are in play. There is power dynamics to where some people don't want to say things. So developing that trust and all of that is a major component of this work. And I know that's something that sounds fluffy and and it doesn't help. You know, those students who are being most harmed. But in those direct, you know, conversations that I'm able to have, there's some specific things that I can, you know, pinpoint with educators or principals even. But it's a fluffy answer that people don't want to hear, but it's absolutely necessary, or we will cause more harm. You know what I mean?
I don't, I don't see it as fluffy. First of all, I appreciate you remembering my other question. Question. Secondly, I don't see it as fluffy, but I also have to say, similar to what I was saying to Carla. That it's a both and situation, right? We do have to develop capacity to do a variety of things. We also know that certain students are on the bubble, right? And and are experiencing real challenges. We identified them last. Year, we identified some of them in the last meeting. We were talking about E L students not flapping, right? So what I'm asking for is an elevation of the prioritization, those students we've already identified. Either as their own point, priority number four, or to show up clearly in one or all of the other, the other buckets, because I do think. They relate to the others. I think they're also worth putting out on their own, but I don't know if I'm just in my own head with this idea. And that other people don't see it as as much a priority as these other three things, but I'm calling the question because we're an open session.
So so we we heard. You all loud and clear at the last two meetings that that was something that you wanted to see. And I wouldn't add it as its own whole category. I would add it to the the list of all the other things that we're doing. The M T S S work where we actually have children listed. By their student outcomes and the services that they get and the things that they might need that go across. They basically track students in a way, and I don't mean tracking meaning what class they're in. I mean, keeping track of students. Starting with the most important thing that we're there for, which is student outcomes. So what are their student outcomes? And if we have a bar that we go across that says. They're not proficient or in need of support or failing, whatever those terms are that we want to use. Then what are the services they're getting? What do, how we, how do we identify those? We have those documents. We we. We sent out a model document to all principals to make sure that we could get a consistent document in our K to eight work. And we could put on our content calendar a way to demonstrate what those look like to you. So you can say and feel confident, I know Jamal, you asked the same question. Do we have an eye on every student who's not meeting with success? Who are they? Male, female, what's their background? What are the demographics? What supports do they get? Are they on an I E P? Are they an E L student? Are they meeting regularly with a guidance counselor or a social worker? And so what is that? What does that line look like to that one child? And where are the gaps that we have to maybe address in order to try to increase those those student outcomes? Because their student outcomes are on the right hand side. So we we can produce a document that we are using currently. It looks a little different across school because a lot of it's generated by the practitioners and we're trying to to kind of make it a consistent document. But we can show you what that looks like and you will be able to see how we have an eye on every vulnerable student, especially K to eight. When it comes to their academic outcomes, who they are, what supports they need, and and what supports are in place. And what might be needed to be with the supports in place. To be enhanced in order to get those student outcomes increased. So we can produce that for you. We heard you loud and clear. We have it and we're trying to make it consistent. So you have a document that should represent what's happening in our K to eight schools. And I'm sorry, Janice wanted to follow up.
I just wanted to say, and and I I don't think that that this is what you're inferring, Jeff, but just to say clearly for you and for the committee and for the community that. Just because we don't talk about that in this document doesn't mean it isn't what we're doing. That's what we do all the time. And and in pre, in the before times, we did do more meetings where we talked about student learning data and that's on the contact calendar to bring to you. M C A S data is not yet, it's still embargoed, so I can't talk about it yet. But I and vocal data, which is the the climate survey data is preliminary, and I'm not going to bring forward preliminary data, but we will bring to you. The data that we have that tells you that we still need to do the work that Chantal is talking about. And so that. That will be coming forward and that is work that happens. It's every year.
And and the M T S S work that we got involved in has been. Valuable because it's provided a consultant to come in and provide that outside view of what we're doing and how we're doing it and how we're collecting. It and how we're using it to make sure that we don't miss students. So that's the part that we're trying to. Take advantage of and use to our to to support students and make it more consistent.
Thanks.
Kate? Just a minor question, but. But I did notice that some of the survey data that we have collected in the last few years, the demographics aren't being consistent across the reports. So I'm just flagging that between like the vocal data, the M I T audit, the Y R B S data, there's. There's a lot of range there, so it would be really great to get consistency. And it sounds like you may be already thinking about that.
We can't control how all these different agencies do their data.
Well, I mean, with Y R B S, you do have some some influence. In any regard, I think it's going to be really important and helpful for us to know to make some. Consistency so we can see that things historically otherwise. I I fear we'll miss things, but I just wanted to point that.
Yeah, there there is terminology and words matter and vocabulary matters in in certain circumstances, and we are trying to anchor our data. Data sources moving forward. And standardized assessments that are provided by the state and or by Y R B S. So we don't have to generate that each time and and then go through that process of making sure that it's a, it's a, it's a an appropriate tool. But getting them all to talk to each other, either we have to acknowledge some assumptions, but. We do want to use vocal for climate and culture. We do want to use Y R B S for our mental health. We do want to use our I ready and M C A S and. Some existing internal protocols for our academic outcomes. And and if we can agree on some data points that we're going to utilize every year. Then we don't have to have this conversation every year to Jeff's point. This can be a committee of, this can be a, an annual. You know, discussion about where are we in each one of those data points that measure the different things that we have. Prioritize is valuable for students and student outcomes.
I, that's great to hear, I think, because it's it's hard, right? To look at those things and try to draw some conclusions, but. The other question I had with respect to the vocal data, which I'm assuming is is also a year. Kind of test like a survey that happens just.
Rates four, five, eight and 10 at the conclusion of the M C A S administration.
So when I had raised that kind of monitoring question last time you had presented. That was the kind of information I was thinking about. And if there was some other way to have more frequent feedback for. How? How welcomed students are feeling, how they're feeling about the environment, because. My guess is you might not see the. Positive impacts in an academic way, but you might. See impacts happening more immediately through the kinds of questions that the vocal data asks. And so I wonder if there was a way. Or I'm sure you're getting some kind of feedback that it could be incorporated into. More regular reporting and monitoring for for us to be.
So do you mean something to the effect of something within the school year to supplement the vocal data as an example?
Yes, because I guess my fear is it's too infrequent and that they're.
Annual, that's it, once a year.
Right, right. So I didn't know.
Y R B S is every other year.
Right.
And obviously, the academic outcomes yearly.
Think a lot of. A lot is being invested in in things that aren't. Going to be seen. In the academic progress, perhaps immediately. I mean, it will come, obviously, but.
So we are, I'm glad that that was a question that Jeff asked, and I'm glad that we're able to provide you the. Understanding that we will present you that view of our students, especially our most vulnerable students in the the areas that we look at in a way to inform our work. In the classroom and in the buildings. And we're thankful for the M T S S work that we had over the last two years that we actually got with federal money, I believe. And supported in the work. And and I want to thank Carla for leading it at the middle school level, which is now moving down into the elementary school levels. And we have asked the principals to provide us their chart so we can begin to. Get a consistent document, and that would be a great presentation for school committee meeting, because it will be fertile ground for student outcome, budget, direction, services. And I think that that's the kind of. Discussion, Jeff, that you've been talking about that that could fuel that kind of good public discussion about what the schools need, what they want to move towards.
Sounds good. So we'll take one or two more comments and then I guess we'll look forward to continuing this discussion. I know I'm going to go with Jamal because he had his hand raised first, and then I will go with Jeff.
So I I did want to follow up on the. Chantal, I appreciate appreciate that you brought in student voice into the hiring. Practice. I just wanted to clarify, kind of similar to some of the conversation that we were having earlier. I think it's probably telling that the owner of this school and the supporter. Where's Mike?
He had, he had, he had another.
It's it's from an H, from U and an H R and not as much on the student level, right? So it's a student provider. So it's a student providing services now instead of being receiving services, right? I think, I think it would be great if there's a co-ownership here with, with the, from an academic standpoint as well. So Janice. I think part of the, part of the issue here is that I, when I think about the goal here, I'd like, I'd like to be focused on two things, not only, not only the faculty and how we can, how we can build that capacity, et cetera, but also the outcomes for the students, which is kind of the conversation we had before and making it quantitative, right? So we're not only, so it's one thing to say, we know everything we need to know about the students and here are all the different measures and metrics that we will use. It's another to say, by the end of the year, what we want to see is an uplift in, in X, right? It could be the number of students who've been identified by the end of the year, for the end of the year for advanced classes next year. We know these are the, the number of students students of color, really, and economic disadvantage do not participate in, in honors, A Ps to the same level as, as their, as their, as their friends. And, and oftentimes they drop down. And so if we can build that into as a quantitative measure, that this is what we're going to be looking at. And if we fail, it's okay to fail in this, in this goal, but it sets the goal from the, from the superintendent all the way down to the teacher in terms of what we're going to do for these students. And if we fail trying, it's okay to fail trying.
There's a lot to unpack there. I'll just say that, like that, that wouldn't, as a, as this being my profession, I wouldn't even use that as like an example, like to say that that would be something that I think is desire. I don't know. It's, it's, it's so much more to unpack there. I don't want to just see a representation of more kids in that, you know, advanced classes. I want to see structural changes with that process, right? Like, so it's not just a matter of are they in there or not? Like, and like, what's, who's this? Like, how many, whatever. There's a lot to unpack there.
I understand. And I understand that's what you want and that's what I want. But what I'm sending you, what I want, I want to see both.
Yeah.
And what I want is I want to maintain the equity and I want, want to maintain excellence. I want to see that the social, emotional learning is impacted. I want to see the academics are impacted. I, and I want to, I want, I want, I want a metric around that.
And you want it all in year one?
No, it's not. It's actually, John, I, I understand what, I understand the pushback. But it's, what I'm saying is that this is sufficiently, put a metric on it. And if you fail in year one, it's okay, but it sets, it sets the tone from the top all the way down.